Newport City Regular Council meeting this call to order at 6:30 p.m. Present at the meeting, President John Wilson, Councilman Charbonneau, Councilman Vashon, Councilwoman Curtis, City Clerk Treasurer, James Johnson, Control Program Director Rebecca Tarian. Also here I have the interim Fire Chief, Chief of Police, Fire Department members, Public Work, Mr. Veneak. Next item, additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. President Wilson?
None.
Councilman Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilman Vashon?
No, thank you.
Councilman Curtis?
No, thanks.
Treasurer Johnson? Controller? Next item on the agenda, number three, discussion of bonding elected officials and employees. May I have a motion to open discussion regarding whether the council should require its members to be bonded?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
All second.
I have a motion and a second. Comments? Yes.
How much does it cost to have each member bonded?
We're going to go through that in the discussion, is that all right?
That's great.
Okay. So, in the discussion, back?
Somebody comment?
Yes ma'am.
Is there any type of coverage currently?
I'm going to go through all of that in this discussion.
That's the question that I've had on the table.
I'm going to go through all of that. We're starting the discussion now, and so let's get it, okay? So.
Give me a moment, I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Now bringing the discussion back to our council members. Okay. I do want to bring this out so that we all understand this, that the residents of Newport should know that previous mayors have not been bonded, prior city manager, although required by charter, has not been bonded, have never been bonded. The interim city manager was never bonded, although, as I said, in the charter, the city manager is supposed to be bonded. The treasurer and his staff have not been bonded, however, they have insurance coverage, and I'm going to go further into that. Okay? The individual council members have not been bonded. When I actually became mayor, I looked at the charter and put with the approval of the contract for the city manager explicitly in that contract, that the city manager did need to be bonded in accordance with the contract. There is a crime infidelity coverage that includes employees, the treasurer, and officials, and the policy covers acts of employees and officials specifically for loss or damage to money securities or other property resulting directly from theft committed by an employee or official. It also covers for loss or damage to money securities or other property resulting directly from the failure of any employee or official to faithfully perform duties as prescribed by law. I'm going to tell you my thoughts, my opinion. I personally believe that council members, the city manager, the mayor should be bonded. That is my personal opinion in general, and I would take it further and say possibly some legislators, but I'm just going to roll it back to here. I personally believe that it is prudent for officials in municipalities to be bonded. I don't think you need to go so extraordinarily high to stop people from holding office because that would not be right, because we do have other insurance, but I do believe that people should be appropriately bonded. And I would like to discuss it here, and then I'm actually going to bring forward a motion, but I'd like to hear everybody's thoughts. No thoughts?
What am I up?
So, I believe that the individuals should, the officials, should be bonded at $100,000 each. I think that would be, well, because it's surety bonds, and I've checked with the various bonding companies for municipalities, and the reason I say that is because they are still covered within the insurance. However, the municipalities for official, the surety bonds for officials have said that is the amount that they actually cover for officials. I do believe that the city manager needs to be higher than that. I believe, and this is just my opinion, okay? I believe that the city manager should be bonded for $500,000. And then, because as usual, you know, the individual council members and the mayor do everything with authority and approval, but there are people out there who are actually cutting checks. And so I have concerns that people are not bonded. I have concerns that in the past, the city manager by charter was to be bonded and was not bonded. And I think everybody, you bringing this to everybody's attention, I was aware that the city manager was not bonded, and that's why I did put it in the contract, but I was not aware that there was never any bonding going historically back. So sometimes these comments that come out really do bring good discussions forward. So, any other thoughts on this?
Comments?
So, depending upon your, if it's $100,000, it should only cost you under $500 to pay for that bond.
Who pays for it?
You do, it's your bond, you pay for it. However, my, I'm going to be asking for a motion because I know we are coming to the election time, so I'm going to be asking that this begins March 1st, because two people are actually not going, are going to be giving up their seats, or definitely one, possibly two, giving up their seats. So to have them go through that process for six weeks is just, I don't believe it's necessary at this stage. So, for that.
Senator Mayor, I know the conversation's with you guys.
Just, wait, I'm going to come to you, just.
Okay.
I will come back to you, okay? Once I make the motion and we do that process, I will come back to you.
What does the process look like, bonding?
Sure. So, you would contact the surety company, and I could give several, okay? And they would ask you specific questions, you know, and hopefully you're not a mass murderer, and if, you know, and even then you could probably get bonded, just have to go through a lot more steps. But, so they would ask you specific questions, they would do their checks on you, and then say yes, you pay them, and they'd issue your certificate. It's not a difficult process. I mean, it just as, if things are identified, it may take longer, but I don't think that anybody on this council would have an issue. I don't think it would be anything that would be too difficult. I just think it's prudent, so. Council, any thoughts on this?
What exactly would that cover that we're not already covered?
So dishonesty, fraud, you know, specific, any immunities, of course, any immunities that are identified to elected officials, they stick with the bond, so those immunities are still immunities. However, if you go out of that, then there's the right to, you know, issue a claim.
Well, we, although we vote on budgets and money, we don't actually sign any checks or anything of that nature.
Well, we do sign the warrants, and we are responsible at the end of the day for the fiscal, the accountability of the city, the budget, the water, et cetera. So we do have, we're not signing checks, but the likelihood of a council member grabbing the checkbook and signing something is far less than somebody who has access to it. But I think that equality-wise, it just makes sense. And as I said, this is my opinion.
Now, wouldn't there have to be an intent for fraud, like if, when we're signing the warrants? If there is a clarion error, you know, we saw $200,000 going to this person, then I'd raise a question. But my assumption is, Mr. Johnson knows how to balance the books and go through the warrants, and there's no intent on his part to commit fraud, and we certainly are not complicit in any fraud or whatever, I would be, I would think they would be hard-pressed to say, oh, they're committing fraud, they didn't know it.
Oh, I'm not suggesting that there's going to be an intent to deceive, I'm just saying that I think that, my opinion, that those people who are taking this type of a position should step up to the plate and be bonded.
And is that, are we talking just the city manager or the entire council?
No, the city manager must be bonded by charter, that's a, that's a done deal, okay? Now it's a matter of the city council members as well. I mean, we could take it further and say any person who signs checks, if we wanted to go that far. But right now, treasurer in the charter can either be bonded or have the insurance, and we have the insurance, so our treasurer's fine there. Also, officials are covered under that, but I just think it's responsible and accountable for each member, as opposed to signaling now, member A, now member B, that everybody should be bonded. But that is, as I said, my opinion.
Question?
Yes.
So what happens if, I think you said, on March, Kevin, well, I'm assuming Kevin, I know I'm leaving, you could bond the heck out of me, I'm not worried about it, but what if we said, okay, if you're on the council, you have to be bonded, but we have elected officials, what if they say, no, I don't need to be bonded because I think I'm covered by the city?
Well, that's what we vote.
What is the recourse? So you can't kick them off the council?
Well, no, what we're doing is if they're, if we vote to have them be bonded, they must be bonded. In order for them to get on the council, they have to be bonded, if that's our vote.
I think legal robbery.
I don't think so. I mean, it's, that's, that's everyone's opinion, I'm just saying, I think that it's important. I'm going to ask Ms. Bielin to, even though it's a little out of order, the case.
I appreciate that.
Because I know you have some input.
Yeah, so I'll speak in the microphone, so. So the major concern that I had was in reference to you as the mayor taking over the role of the city manager, and the charter saying that there needed to be a bond. And as long as there is no city manager, all those duties by charter fall on you. I do understand that there's crime insurance, and the crime insurance, I've yet to find out what the limits are on it, and I would really like to know what those limits are. Do you know that?
I am actually asking, I read through part of it to try to come up with those limits, and I don't have that number today.
Okay.
In the section I pulled, I thought might have it in there, and it doesn't, so we will get that in.
Okay. The other thing to look to, to have guidance, I believe, is the statute. I didn't bring my computer tonight, so I can email all of you the statute. The real turning point in the statute is anyone who has the ability to receive or disperse funds. And so when you're in that situation, that's kind of the heightened level. I wouldn't necessarily say that the council, as a general rule, is in that role. However, there might be times when those roles do arise, in so much that if one of the council members or the mayor is designated as the signatory on grants, and is the one that's going to be receiving and dispersing grant money, at that point, I think, in order to be in compliance with the statute, you probably need to look at the bonding issue. The crime insurance is mentioned in the statute as well, and depending on what those limits are, it may actually take care of things, but I haven't been able to get a straight answer from anybody as to if everybody's covered by crime insurance. Tonight's actually the first that I'm hearing, yes, everybody is.
Yeah, I have that.
So that's good, that's good news, and I'm feeling better as a taxpayer now. But I still don't know the limits. I mean, if the limits are $100,000, but somebody's in charge of dispersing and receiving millions of dollars, you know, you might want to take a look at that too, because this is to protect the taxpayers against the potential for both negligent and fraudulent activity. So, that's my feedback. I don't, I think if the crime insurance is in place for the council as a whole, with the exception of those scenarios where certain people are actually receiving and dispersing funds, an additional bond may be overkill, because the insurance should cover it, but those roles that do have receiving and dispersing funds, I agree, bonding is probably appropriate.
And to your point, I have to get the number.
Yeah.
And I apologize, I figured it would be in the policy that I had, but I have to actually, so I have to actually go and place some phone calls for that. But I do know that officials, et cetera, are covered. I just personally believe that $100,000, I think $500,000 once we get a city manager is appropriate, but let's hear what everybody has to say. So, yes ma'am?
Do you, do you want general discussion now? Because I had actually signed up in the comments section to speak about bonding, but I'm quite happy to do it now.
Okay, no, that's okay, since it's a bit out of sync here, and I appreciate that everybody is cooperative on this.
My name's Pam Lads, and I'm a resident of Newport. I've listened for the last 15 weeks' meetings to Jennifer here raising the issue of bonding, basically as an assault against you, because you're the one apparently who was the target who should have been bonded. And now I discovered that nobody was bonded, including the city manager, who we all knew was supposed to be bonded according to the statute. What I find really disturbing about this is that some of you on the council may or may not have known about that, but I will bet that the mayor, the ex-mayor, who has been sitting at the back of the room, Woody Page, who is a state representative, and Melissa Patterson, who's sitting over there, all knew that. So you guys have allowed this circus to go on and on. That's really not okay. I mean, clearly bonding is an issue, or has been in theory, but the real issue is why wasn't the previous city manager bonded if that was required in the statute and in the charter? That makes absolutely zero sense. So, if anybody has any answers to that, that would be wonderful.
So, that was one of the issues, and as I said, it was brought up for reasons, everybody has the right for their reasons. And so I started to look through that, and I was, I was surprised that the city manager wasn't bonded, and then I didn't realize that there's never been bond in place. So, I'm going to stop the discussion back and forth right now, because the bottom line is, it's up to the council to make that vote, and then after they vote, I'm going to say something else, okay? So, I am going to ask.
Can I just, sorry?
Oh, yes. No, right ahead, no, of course.
I know we're kind of rolling into election season, what happens if that $500 is a hardship for the newly elected?
Can you please speak up first?
If I can move this closer, is that better? What happens if the newly-elected official, that $500 is a hardship for them?
Right. Well, I think the key is that when you're, and I'm not saying it's 500, it could be under 500, I just do that as kind of a high on a $100,000 bond. The responsibility is for the official to post their bond, I mean, to take that position. So regardless of whether it's a hardship or not, it is that person's responsibility. I personally believe that if you're stepping up to the plate and you're going to be responsible for A, B, and C of what we're doing here, you have to take that, you have to bite the bullet, and you have to bond yourself, you know? So it's not going to be, well, you know, the city could pay for it.
No, I'm just saying. We just came out of.
No, I'm just saying, I just wanted to make that clear, like, you can't turn around and say, hey, you know, let's have the city pay for council member A, it's your bond, you are taking responsibility for it, and you're going to go ahead and do that. But I think the salaries cover the $500. So, I just don't, I, there's going to be open comment after, I just want to get this through. I just want to come back to the council at this point and pass it, and see if they're going to pass it, or they're not, and then we can address it further. Any comments?
Time period, is it a year, one-year bond?
Yeah, the bonds are usually a year, and then you renew them thereafter, so if somebody is here for two years, they would just renew it on the second year. And I will tell you this, usually the bond, and this will go pretty much to answer your question, usually surety bonds will allow, I think it's up to five people, so the $500 may cover all five, if you get that type of a surety bond. So everyone is bonded individually, but if you have X amount of people, they give you that reduced rate. Okay, so, I'm going to move that the council require each member of the council, as of March 1, 2024, to secure a bond to ensure the faithful performance of each member's duties in an amount equal to $100,000, and require the city manager to secure a bond in the amount of $500,000 to ensure the honest performance of the city manager's respective duties. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
For motion and a second. Comments?
Yeah, sorry. Just making notes. One idea in reference to the financial hardship, Councilman Vashon, it might be if the city would be willing to do in advance on the salary of the councilperson in that regard, so then it wouldn't be coming out of their pocket immediately, like, they wouldn't get as much money in their salary for the city, but it would be covering the bond. And I have a second comment, not at this time.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I have another question. If an applicant to be on the council, or to be employed in any of the roles that you're suggesting for bonded, happens to have a criminal record, what would happen then?
That person would go through, you, you can be bonded, you just have to go through the process that's required by the surety, maybe a further look at the person than somebody like President John Wilson. Yes.
Gentlemen, I am a former council member. So my question is, with the pay that we do give our council, which is miniscule, I would think that we should, as a city, pick up a surety bond on the council members. I would say also, as a volunteer for a number of nonprofits, I certainly would be very hesitant to serve a nonprofit board who would not buy officers and directors liability insurance, which is what I think you're doing, because they're approving expenditures, they aren't signing checks. And I just, I just think that it would be fairer for the council to pick it up, and that will not be a hardship on an individual.
Thank you. So just to that point, I did check that through, and you must hold your own bond, and your suggestion is, Ms. Bielin, was an option, as well as the, my speaking with the bonding company that said they could spread it out, so whatever the cost was, it could be up to five people. So I don't think it would really be that much of a hardship.
I would also suggest thinking about increasing the small amount of money that each councilman receives, so it would not, it would not be anything to do with the bond, but that we think seriously, if they have to get themselves bonded, of increasing by $500 the amount of money that you receive for your whole year to something grand, from 2,000 to 2,500 in terms of salary.
Right, well, we could address that, though, at a different time. Okay, so now we have, oh, I apologize.
I was just going to make the comment of, you know, if you're requiring this, any job that requires something is normally paid for, any kind of insurance is paid for by the company, so why wouldn't the city be responsible to pay for that if they're requiring that for any, any more than they do?
Because a bond of this sort by an official is not, it's specific, that you must cover your own bond.
It's specific, it's specific to any person, but they don't care where the check comes from.
No, but that's, yeah, they do. They do care. They literally do care, the surety company does care. And that's why I said, there are some other options, ways to assist, but I've also checked with lawyers as well to make sure, and we must hold, like, for example, if I'm a receiver, it's my bond, I have to post that bond, okay? And so it's a little bit different than other types of bonds, and it's also different than nonprofits.
Just real quick, so I just wanted to speak to Ms. Ladd's comment. I think what was going on is that there was truly confusion, because when I started to investigate this situation, and I spoke to Ms. Johnson, and I spoke, I don't, I think I tried to speak to VLCT, and there was confusion in reference to what was covered by the crime insurance as opposed to a specific bond. And I think the statute itself speaks to either/or, crime insurance or a bond as set by the council. And so I think there was an underlying assumption by all parties that the crime insurance that they had through VLCT covered it, but it doesn't in reference to the city manager or those that receive or disperse funds.
Right, and that's specific, if I'm following you, that's specifically for the treasurer that I go with?
No, it was.
No, I'm saying there was on the insurance, it's a, the council can say that the treasurer needs to have a bond. It's a, the council can say that the treasurer needs to have a bond or insurance, not for the city manager and not for everybody else, as you just said, your light.
I, I don't, we'd have to take a look at it together.
Yeah, basically, I would love to.
But my, my recollection of the statute is that there was a whole string of people and, and then it came in either-or. And I don't think it was specific to just the city treasurer. I think it was taking in all of the parties. I'd have to look at the punctuation marks to, to know that for certain. But there wasn't either-or clause. And because there was crime insurance, I think all parties assumed that that took care of the statutory requirement.
Right, but it didn't really.
I don't know that.
Yeah, no, you're right with the, with the list. There was a list, but I think it was a different list.
We'd have to look at it together.
Yeah, so, so just for the, to be concrete, you know how concrete I am.
No.
So let's assume, which I'm not and not, and will not be, I'm a candidate, that I was gonna be a candidate and I've gotten my 20, 30 signatures. And now I hear about this bond situation. But, but I'm already on the ballot. And I, I certainly don't want to get my bond possibly before I know I'm elected because I don't want to pay the money for something I'm not even gonna need it for. So then I get elected. How much time do I have to get bonded?
Well, you should be bonded within, you know, a reasonable time. You can't go free and say, you know, so there'll be, well, I, I know that it's supposed to be, I think it's 10 or 13 days or you have.
The statute speaks to that.
Right, I, I don't have the exact days. So it does not take that long to get bonded unless there's real issues.
Okay.
Okay, so I think what happens is if you don't get bonded within, let's, I'm gonna make this number up, two weeks, that position becomes vacated. That doesn't mean that the council can't say we'd like to cure some, you know, and probably didn't cure. But there's a timeframe. So as I said, like, if I was going to be receiver and I was gonna post a bond, I don't get to say, well, I'm gonna take three years to get my bond. I have to post it immediately.
It's, it's a little different in that if you were in that situation and hired on that basis, they could hire somebody else instead of you.
They don't hire someone.
But when, when a person gets elected now and doesn't complete the bonding in the right amount of time and you now have a vacancy, the vacancy has to be filled either by having another election or an appointment.
And that's in the statute.
Right.
It's in statute, so it's not a shock. No, it's there, so.
The only comment I had was, we've thrown two numbers out here to ask everybody here to vote right now and say, okay, I could be hit for 500 bucks. Well, we don't know that. It's a big difference on the vote. I mean, if we knew from whoever floats these bonds, saying, okay, oh, as a councilor, you can all tip in 100 bucks, but we don't know that.
No, what we do from one, I have from one surety company, they've already said they'll go up to five people for that same amount of money.
That makes a difference on how we vote.
Yeah, sure. Well, I want to make sure that you have one. Okay, so the motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post, say nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried. I would also like to say that apart from all of this, I am bonded. Okay, so I do have a hand for this position.
Thank you.
May I, just, I'd like to step back for a moment. And why are you, why is the council voting on this now when potentially half the council is gonna be new in a couple of weeks?
That's why. Because starting March 1st, everybody needs to be bonded. Not, we wouldn't do it retroactive, you have to go forward. So now all of the new people coming on and the people who are here, and I will totally support you in how they do that. It's very important. That's why. Okay, because it is going to ask to do it going forward. And we're definitely looking for a city manager and we're going through all of this. So it's, in my mind, it was prudent. And I thank the council and for everybody for bringing this up. It was important in my mind.
Is there any reason why somebody can't be bonded because of financial difficulty, bankruptcy, anything like that, or can anybody be bonded?
Okay, so the surety companies are gonna make that final decision, but usually people can be, get bonded. It's just a different, further interviewing process to get there. Okay, I, unless it's such a heinous issue, you know, and, uh, I would think that there would not, it's not an obstacle for people to get bonded. Maybe if you're a habitual, have a habitual scenario going on, maybe. But I would think that even then you could, for this type of bond, I would think you'd be fine.
And is the bond, does the bond amount the same somewhat at 850 score compared to somewhat of 400 score?
Well, we're only doing 100,000. So that's what means of all officials are allowed to be bonded. And when I spoke to the various bonding.
And I mean the credit rating, I mean.
It's not just based on the credit rating. It's based on a lot of other issues. So they actually speak to the individuals, okay? And they do their weighing. And it's, I don't believe that this is going to be an obstacle for anybody, but I think it's, I think it's good for the city. And so do my fellow councilmembers right now. Thank you for that. Okay, now, let's move on. The next item on the agenda, she's letting me make sure I have it right, is to approve the minutes of January 8, 2024, and January 15, 2024. I'm going to ask for two separate motions. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 8, 2024?
I'll make that a motion, in a second.
I have a motion and a second. Yes?
So on the January 8th minutes, it stated that Jennifer Hopkins ceded her time to me. And I don't believe that's an accurate reflection. Because as my recollection of it, and I went back and looked at the video again, the question was never answered as to whether or not the, the cessation of time was granted. I asked a second time and still went unanswered and I was told I had my two minutes. So I, I just don't think it's an accurate reflection.
Well, and she did cede, but it wasn't granted.
She could cede her minutes to you and that's, we're at end.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Ayes have it and the motion is. Okay, now may I have a motion to approve the minutes for January 15, 2024? Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any comments for the discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried. Okay, we're now going to be opening the Florida Public Commons for each agenda item as well. Members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present and that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council members are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City council meetings are the only time the city council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. City council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings in that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the city council. To conduct orderly and efficient meetings, I kindly request the public's cooperation and compliance with the published guidelines when participating in the meeting. Thank you. And for those of you who are interested, the participation guidelines are there. So here we go. Okay, once your name is read from the list, please identify who you are, speak into the microphone, and you will have two minutes. Would, Councilman, would you actually? Ms. Bonds?
Good evening, my name is Beth Barnes, Newport resident. On May 15, 2023, when I was still mayor, I was invited to a meeting to learn about the Grandstand effort. Two of the board members were present, one was former Mayor Minette. During pre-meeting small talk, I said I had just come from paying my taxes. Right away, Mr. Minette shared the funny story of when he was a couple of months late with his taxes and Mr. Johnson personally called him to ask if he was going to pay. I was a couple of days late once, too. Paying late taxes is not my issue. And since Mr. Minette so freely shared this information publicly, I have no issue sharing my own concerns with the current mayor and council. When I was late, I received a letter with the interest and penalties that were due. I did not get a personal call. These are my questions that I respectfully ask the council to explore on behalf of all taxpayers. Number one, is it the job of the city clerk treasurer to make personal calls like this? Or did the mayor receive special treatment? Number two, who was the delinquent tax collector at the time of the delinquent payment? And why didn't they contact the former mayor in the way I and probably others are contacted via letter? Three, and lastly, were the appropriate interest and penalties attached to this late payment? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Ladd?
Oh, I, I no longer need to spoke about bonding, oh, yeah.
Ms. Hopkins?
Jennifer Hopkins, resident of Newport. I sort of was interested that, I'm wondering what it says about a organization that announces a deadline and then chooses to ignore it. Certainly, it has made me question the attention to detail, if not their trustworthiness. And yet tonight's agenda, or tomorrow night's agenda, has the council doing that exact thing. You have put out advertisements for the position of city manager. You have announced the deadline. And every place that I've seen it listed, which is several, is January 31st. And yet, eight days in advance, you have scheduled interviews. Now, we had just gone through having interviews scheduled in November when we had not put ads out. December 18th ended up being scheduled to interviews again, at which point Mr. Wilson said that he wanted the interviews to interview all candidates at once and not piecemeal. And Mr. Curtis then ended up pointing out that perhaps we should listen to the residents and postpone. So my question is, why are you holding interviews eight days before your deadline when you could have had somebody wait till the deadline to submit?
Thank you for your comment.
I already addressed my stuff.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda, number six, is the candidate sign policy with an anticipated vote. May I have a motion that the council adopt the proposed policy for signs on city property and repeal the city's political signs policy?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second? A motion and a second. Comment? Further discussion? Sure, I'm actually, why don't you go for it? Okay, so here it is, the city in Newport. This is the policy for signs on city property that, because remember, we have elections coming up and there was a little confusion the last round. So, one, private signs of any nature are prohibited from being displayed on city-owned property such as Gardner Park, Pomelo Park, Proudey Beach, municipally-owned buildings, and city dock area. Two, A, notwithstanding section one of this policy, private signs no larger than eight square feet may be displayed during the six weeks prior to any election in which city voters are participating at the following city-owned property locations. One, the bottom of East Main Street and Union Street. Two, Western Avenue and Mount Vernon Street near the sidewalk. Three, Proudey Drive and Union Street near the swamp. B, any signs displayed under section 2A shall be removed from city-owned property within three days after the election. Three, for the purposes of this policy, the untraveled portion of the city's road rights of way are not considered city-owned property. Four, for safety reasons, no signs are allowed at any time in the medians of the state's or the city's roads' right of way. If this passes, I will ask that copies be available for the candidates or who, anyone who would like this, okay? So that you can more clearly see it. And this was, this is important because everybody is out there and we don't want signs picked up regardless of whether it was, for whatever reason it happened before, it doesn't matter. We just want to make sure that it's clear and people know that they can put their signs out and run for the seats. So I have a, thank you. I have a motion and a second.
Is, if this is approved, is it immediate or does it have to go to wherever to be signed up?
Okay, we approve, they get to start. Okay, so any further discussion here, councilmembers?
More praying while you pray?
Yeah, it's, it's less restrictive, right. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried. Good lucks to everybody. Thank you, Kevin. Okay. Okay, here we go. The next item on the agenda is the annual warning approval and signature. May I have a motion that the council approve the annual warning?
So.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Does the, does the warning include the budget? Or does it just include the statement that will the citizens of Newport agree to X amount of money being taxed to them?
It, it should be just the amount, yeah, just the amount for the warning itself.
You can adjust the way the budget looks if you choose to.
Yes.
Thank you.
So this is just the note, okay. Okay?
All it says is the bottom line and they have to raise the budget.
Okay, any further comment by my councilmembers? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried.
May I, may I direct the copy?
Okay, here we go. All good? Chair, the chair is good? Next item, that Casella SWIP MOU extension with an anticipated vote. May I have a motion that the council approve the extension of agreement for services as proposed by Casella Waste Management and authorize the mayor to sign the same on behalf of the city?
So move.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Comment?
Yes. That in November 1st of 2021, this contract came before the council. And I feel like I was hoodwinked and that the council was hoodwinked at the time. And I guess only one of you was there at the time. So, upstepped some rep from Casella, and then upstepped the council and Laura Dolgan. And they said, and I gave you all a copy of it, all of the paperwork that comes out from Casella is in beautiful colors. And this was the copy that was received at the time. And we were told by the former mayor, Minette, at the time that this would save us $4,000. And the way that worked supposedly was that Laura Dolgan's time that she spent doing the work to write the reports and everything cost the city $7,000 of her salary. And the work that Tom Bernier did to do whatever part he does in doing this, getting this SWIP, whatever it is, the Solid Waste Implementation Plan going, costs $7,500. So that in salary, we were paying $15,000 or so for this. And Casella would do it for $4,000. And so the mayor said, oh, well, we're saving about $10,000. And everybody immediately voted for it. And then I went home and I thought, wait a minute. That only works that we save this $15,000 if you lowered the salaries of Laura Dolgan and Tom Bernier by $7,075,000. Well, nobody was going to lower their salaries. So they got their salaries, they didn't do this work anymore. And Casella, out of pocket, the city paid Casella $4,000 to do this work. So it was not a net gain of $10,000. It was a loss of the $4,000 we were going to pay out of pocket. And so, but they told us that it was going to come back in a year. So I thought, well, I could go in, but they already voted for it. So I'm not going to say anything for a year, and I'll tell them it next year. But it never came back for a vote the following year. And it never came back for a vote the following year. And this is the first time it's come back. And you may say in the end, oh, $4,000, what does she care about? I mean, what is she making a fuss about? But I was hoodwinked, and I believe the council was hoodwinked back then. And here are some things that I think you should think about with respect to it, independent of the cost. One is, you've got a template now for how to do it. It's not going to, it's not going to take you as long as it took Laura Dolgan and Tom Bernier back when because they've been producing this report and giving you a copy of it for the last three years. So you can do it now a hell of a lot faster. Number two, Casella, as part of this SWIP, goes into the schools, sends somebody into the schools. We used to send a person who worked on recycling into the schools. He loved it, and the kids loved him. And he told the kids about why it was good to recycle. Now Casella does it, and with all these pretty colored pages. And it says at the top, and it has our logo, the city logo, and Casella's logo next to each other. And it says that you guys are partners. I don't like that. You employ Casella to do this work, but you are not partners with Casella, and you are not in any way responsible, in that sense, which I get from hearing the word partners, for what they're doing. And you may have adverse interests with regard to certain things. You don't want to be considered to be partners with them. And this, I think I've talked about what I think are the primary issues for me. And I should tell you, because somebody may stand up and say, well, you're a member of Dump. I'm not. I approve of almost everything they do, but I am not a member of Dump. And so I want you to think again about the fact that we've been hoodwinked before. Think about how cheaply you should be able to do this task and how you do not want to say to the children in the schools that we are partnering with someone who we frequently have an adverse interest with. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments?
Yes.
Council members? Okay. Thank you for your comment. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post a nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried.
May I ask you something? Could somebody please explain what this means?
What what means? But we're going to sign off on the extension, we're going to extend the agreement.
And what is the agreement, is there a copy of the agreement, or? When, how long?
We can get you. Thank you. There we go.
So how long is the extension, or is that all in here?
One year.
Okay, so it's a one-year extension. How long was the extension that began with Mayor to Mayor? Or was that the 2021?
I think it was back before, I know it was before me, but it was.
Yeah, all the paperwork's there from when the original one.
So all the paperwork, right here, ma'am?
So it was January 1, 2022 is when it commenced.
Okay.
Okay, if you go down to the term, number three.
Yep.
Okay.
And was it a one-year, was it a one-year?
One-year terms upon you to a agreement.
So you're extending it earlier the other year?
Yes, this is.
For another year, for until 2025?
Just want to check one thing based on Ms. Chivilla's comment, I just want to. I'm just re-skimming through it, and I didn't see the term partnership in it, but I'm going to reread it.
If you look at the stuff that he gives out to the schools.
Prior, I understand that, but I just wanted to make sure that the legal term was not in this contract.
I don't, I don't know.
It's not, so I just wanted to be sure on that. Okay, so, I'll start with this. Okay. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the fire extrication lease with an anticipated vote. And I'm going to make, ask for a motion, I'm going to make a motion, ask for a second. And then I'm also going to recognize our city attorney, Matt Blumberg, after that, who is on, these are, right. So, I move that the council authorize the mayor, acting on behalf of the city, to negotiate, enter into, execute, and deliver the master tax-exempt lease purchase agreement between the city and municipal leasing consultants and property schedule number one in substantially the forms presented, as well as all other related documents necessary and incidental to the lease, subject to the review of the city's attorney, and further authorize the city to perform its obligations thereunder. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Open it up to comment, and then after there's no comment, before I bring, I'm going to bring it to discussion back now. And I'm going to recognize our city attorney, Matt Blumberg. Hello, Matt.
Hi all, thanks for having me.
Thank you. Would you be so kind as, that was a pretty complex, long-winded motion, as opposed to, can I sign this? Okay, so would you just be so kind so that the residents and the council understand what's really going on with this motion?
Sure.
Thank you.
So as part of the closing on this particular lease purchase agreement, the bank wants this, our firm, to issue an opinion that says that certain, that we've reviewed certain documents and that the council has provided the proper authority to, in this case, the mayor, to execute the documents, deliver them, and that the city's also been authorized to perform the obligations that are laid out in the documents. So generally, you have a little bit simpler motion. But in this case, we crafted it just to make sure that it tracked the language of the opinion that they want us to issue, so that we can then look back at the minutes and basically have no issue with issuing our opinion because we know that all of the language that they want us to include in that has already been utilized by the council in the enacting motion. So that's why it's a little more long-winded, because you've got a couple different attorneys involved, per usual. But it's really just saying what you're, what normally occurs, which is just that you're giving the mayor the authority to sign on behalf of the city. And there may be a few changes that are made between now and closing, and that's why there's some language in there about in substantially the form presented. And there's always a lot of ancillary documents, which I think are in your packet. So there's kind of a catch-all for other related documents. And we kind of highlight the two major documents, which are the lease purchase agreement and the property schedule. But there's several certificates and other documents that also get signed for the closing.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions for the attorney? I have a motion and a second, and an explanation, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post a nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item is the cell tower, and we will be going into executive session. May I have the first motion, please, to move that the council find that premature general public knowledge of the proposed contract and legal advice provided by the city's attorney. We clearly place the council at a substantial disadvantage by disclosing attorney-client privileged communications and disclosing negotiation strategies and priorities.
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. May I please have a motion now that the council enter into executive session pursuant to 1 VSA Section 313A1A and F to consider the proposed cell tower contract and receive legal advice from the city's attorney and invite the city's attorney and the city comptroller into the executive session?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Post a nay. Eyes have it, motion is carried, and we are now in executive session. Could you like a chair count here? Okay, we are out of executive session, and no action was taken. The next item on the agenda is the interview of potential candidates for fire chief. We are with a potential executive session under 1 VSA Section 313A3. Going to ask everybody after I make this motion to please be as courteous as you can to the potential candidates because they are entitled to their privacy and, you know, their identity. So let's give them that, okay? So may I have a motion that the council enter into executive session to interview candidates for the position of fire chief pursuant to 1 VSA Section 313A3 and invite the comptroller, the interim fire chief, and the police chief and each candidate who will be escorted individually into the executive session for their respective interviews?
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll take the second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post a nay. Eyes have it, and we are now in executive session. Session, no action was taken. And I wanted to make sure that Clark, Carl brings back all the chairs. I'm sorry, I was teasing Carl, I said he has to bring back all the chairs. Okay. Next, and thanks to everybody for your patience. Next item, new business. Assistant Wilson?
Just one thing going around Newport today. Everybody was praising the rep department for the ice skating rinks. And especially the longer one where they actually blow. Kudos to the crew over there. All kinds of people are talking about it. That's all I have.
Counselor? Counselor?
Mine was just to mirror what John said, it's gorgeous out there, lots of those lights in there, so it's always busy.
Rebecca, thank you. Okay, so I just have a couple. I am pleased to announce that myself, the comptroller, the president of the council, we attended a training on town meeting, Australian ballot voting with the legal requirement. So we did that through the LCT, and we are going to be doing one more. I also want everybody to know that Alex Farrell, the commissioner of Vermont Department of Housing and Community Development, followed up with us after the meeting with myself, the Mr. President, the zoning administrator, had walked around. And the commissioner, actually, after we walked around Newport at the last meeting, he identified various grants that could help us specifically in development and also helping individuals living in single homes. So there's a new program. So there's a new program coming out through the state and they actually figured out how it could possibly work for Newport, so they sent us that information and we'll follow up with that. The other thing is, we got the application for the energy resilience assessment that passed through, so we've been approved for the following buildings, the municipal building, Gateway Center, Fire Department, Newport Public Works Garage, and the wastewater treatment plant. So that went through and that's good for us. Next item, old business. President Wilson?
No, I, I've got to say, I know Tom's had a rough winter and this weather we've been having is really bad. They'll fill up, put cold patch in and then the temperature comes up. But, and I hit him offline and I said, look, there's a couple nasty, nasty halls by the railroad tracks, you can't miss them. If you come down West Main, you cannot, you cannot miss the one at the foot of the hill. And I said, I don't care, put dirt in it, something, we're turning into a real pothole city. And I understand a lot of it's the weather, but next week is supposed to be a more mild week, so maybe fill in some holes.
Okay. Councilman?
No, thank you. No thanks. Nothing.
Okay. Chair? So I just want to bring up that I have been, we've been discussing with Department of Public Works and the police chief on the issues regarding handicap availability of the snow and access to the streets and cleaning all of those out. And the, Mr. Bernier has redirected the person in charge of this building to make sure that they get out and start shoveling more pathways through. We're also going to be, I am going to be looking at which businesses and which state offices are responsible for their areas, so I can, I'm getting a list and I'll contact them as well. I can't interfere with their leases, but I can definitely reach out to them and say, this is yours, this is ours, and follow up if they don't do anything. So we are on that. That is very important. I mean, like, it's important, it wasn't like neglected, it just takes a while to sometimes have to figure it out. And I know that, Councilman, that you were on top of that as well with the handicap access with the snow. And so we are addressing that. Okay, the next item is to set the regularly scheduled council meeting for February 5, 2024. I have a motion.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried. Okay, here it comes. Next item, adjournment.
So moved.
Ah, you did it. Second.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion and I think I have three seconds. So, all those, the meeting will be adjourned at, tell me, tell me what time it is, please. It is?
10:08.